I don't even know who you are. You sound like you don't work for the... You sound like the mayor's wife who likes to open your mouth whenever you're not even involved in the trunk conversation. You want to go outside and kick my ass? Is that what you... Did he just threaten me? Did he... Oh, disorderly conduct? Sir, did I threaten you? It's on camera. The camera doesn't lie, sir. So, Mr. Mayor?
I don't answer questions right now.
Yeah, you don't answer questions? How about we go ahead and get the police over here for... So this man threatened to take me outside and kick my ass on camera. Um, are we gonna do something about that? I didn't run the camera back and show it to you. Um, that's disorderly conduct, fighting words.
Okay, I understand that, but um, let's just try to conduct ourselves in an orderly fashion.
I was trying to conduct myself. I wasn't even speaking to him, sir.
Let's start over. Let's try to forgive each other.
No, no, there's no forgiving. There's no forgiving in the law. I'm gonna hold you to it. What is his name, Davis?
Yes, let me use the restroom please.
Okay. So you released him? You said he was free to go?
No, I know what you're doing.
No, you have to tell me. This is an investigation.
I'm not gonna overtalk you. I know what you're doing.
Was he not supposed to be charged? Was he not supposed to be charged?
You're not gonna listen to him or walk off, okay?
No, you... And not doing your job, that's fine. I'll fill out a warrant application myself and they'll charge him.
Listen to me.
You told me you were gonna do the right thing earlier, Davis, and you didn't.
Everybody that's involved, I got their all that information. Officer Edwards has your information?
Oh, he's not... I'm not filling out this report no more. I'm not worried about that.
You're not writing the statement?
No, no. Well, see, what I'm gonna do is take it into my own hands. I got the case number myself. I'm gonna take it into my own hands. I'm gonna go take a warrant... I'm gonna go take a warrant application out on myself, and I'm gonna do your job. Here we are again at the former Pendgrass City Hall Library, but Police Department, they still house the council meetings here, so... We'll go ahead and take a look in. Your hands crossed, you're easy over me. We're gonna be quiet as we come in. This used to be the library and City Hall, but it's been turned into the Police Department over on this side. Um, if you see the authorized personnel, they say Police Department would be on that side. So... But I'm not sure what they're gonna... I mean, I'm guessing... I'm guessing the... This is just gonna remain for the hearings, but here we are. We're inside. We're waiting on the arrival of Mr. Kidd, who might not be able to be here tonight. Even if he shows up, he might have to leave, but we'll see. Anyways, we'll pause this and catch back up later. Yes, Anne?
I'm just asking why. This is already recorded meeting.
Okay, and we were allowed to record it ourselves. For our document. You know how hard it is to get the open records across sometimes? Especially with a city attorney like Doug Kidd? He's not easy to get open records across through. I know a lot about him from Cannon and other places, you know, he's been, but it's not easy to get y'all's recordings, so we do it ourselves because it's constitutional.
I don't think that's true.
Well, it's not true? Yeah, I have evidence.
Do you get recordings of the town meetings here?
Yeah, well, I've read minutes of many of the meetings that I'm here about, so I don't know why you engage with me.
I'm not gonna engage with you.
Well, that would be a smart move on your part. You won't look dumb by the end of this. Alright, so I guess we'll go back on pause now. You stay inside. I didn't record out here too, man.
Why didn't you say anything?
I mean, you did inside.
I asked you what you were doing, that's all. And I have a right to do that.
You do have a right to do that, and I have the right to tell you it's none of your business.
Are you a citizen of Pendgrass?
Um, I've lived in Pendgrass for about 12 years. Does... Is that relevant?
Are you living in Pendgrass now?
Is that relevant?
I'm asking.
I don't answer questions.
Oh, well then I...
Do you work for the city?
Huh?
Do you work for the city? Are you a city employee?
No comment.
No? Are you the mayor's wife?
No comment.
Ah, the mayor's wife. You're the one that gets to talk during meetings whenever it's not even your turn. That's right. Okay, now I know who you are. I figured it out. This is the mayor's wife. There's nothing you're gonna be able to do. They already know. I've already alerted everybody that I was gonna be here. Okay? This meeting will be recorded, and I will be speaking this evening. Now that we've figured it out, now I know why I was accosted because that's apparently the mayor, and that'd be his wife. She gets to, from what I hear, you know, kinda speak out in meetings whenever she wants to. But anyhow, we're still... Let me look at my other phone, my backup, to see how long we got before the meeting starts. Oh, a whopping 26 minutes, and we'll be back. Stay tuned. Oh, nothing they can do. Nothing they can do. Is there anything they can do? I could've answered that for you. Haven't wanted to hurt from a few people. She just speaks out of turn. She thinks out of turn too, apparently. But we'll find out how this meeting goes. This should be a good one, guys. This should be a good one. This might be another one of those combined view, millions and millions of views, when everybody shares her out. But now that she realizes that there's nothing that can be done about us being here, I'm gonna try again to wait, but she had to get up and ask if there's anything that could be done, which there isn't. That's the city clerk right over there. We're gonna be pulling some records on her because I've got some information that I need to check. But uh, as we know, city credit cards are a big deal. So, we got an issue now. Um... That is Doug Kidd. The man that is on a good behavior bond and not supposed to be within 200 yards of that man. Um, so... We now have him, I guess, in violation. Mr. Kidd, I just wanted you to know that Douglas... Doug Ramy was here, and you were within 200 feet of him. I just wanted to make sure you were aware that you just came within 200 feet of Mr. Ramy. We're here about the issue with the chief of police, and I believe you're under a good behavior order, that you're not supposed to be within 200 feet, 200 yards of him?
Is that Mr. Ramy?
That's Mr. Ramy back here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm the city attorney here, so...
Okay, so you're acknowledging you're in violation of the good behavior bond?
I think he's in violation.
Uh, he was the prosecutor. You were the defendant in the warrant application. It doesn't apply to him. If you were a better lawyer, you wouldn't... None of this would've happened, and you wouldn't be in this position, but...
Shane, the wording's right though.
No, no, the wording that the judge has applies to both, and as we both know, appeals can be appealed, right?
Are you a city resident?
I'm sorry?
Are you a city resident?
Who are you?
I'm still based out on Councilwoman. I'm just asking you...
I don't answer questions. I don't answer questions.
Okay.
If you don't answer, I'm just gonna say anything.
Oh, no, I just don't answer questions to... I address the people that are paid by city tax dollars.
Hey, everyone, I think your question's not...
Go for it. Go for it. That's fine. No? I can't make him look...
As a city resident, keep your mouth shut.
What does it matter if I'm a city resident or not? I'm actually gonna speak tonight. I'll actually be speaking this evening.
Well, maybe you're gonna listen to this.
Huh? Guess what? Guess what? Millions of people are gonna listen. I don't even know who you are. You sound like you don't work for the... You sound like the mayor's wife who likes to open your mouth whenever you're not even involved in the trunk conversation. You want to go outside and kick my ass? Is that what you... Did he just threaten me? Did he... Oh, disorderly conduct? Sir, did I threaten you? It's on camera. The camera doesn't lie, sir. So, Mr. Mayor?
I don't answer questions right now.
Yeah, you don't answer questions? How about we go ahead and get the police over here for a disorderly conduct, which is uh, fighting words. Disorderly conduct, fighting words. You gonna take him outside and kick my ass? Yeah. You made this one great. I don't even know who you are, but you're gonna be famous, bud. You're gonna be fucking famous. Yeah, she's telling you the truth. Just shut up. Should've stayed that way to begin with.
I'd appreciate if you watch my...
I know you would, but I have the right to free speech.
I do, but I do not approve...
I typically don't cuss in public places, and out of respect for you, I won't, but I do have the right to. It's not illegal. I do uh, need the chief of police though, or the intern chief of police, wherever he may be. We just had a crime caught on camera. Uh, I was threatened. He told me he was gonna take me outside and kick my ass on camera? Yeah, so that would be disorderly conduct, fighting words, correct? Are you the intern chief police?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay. Councilman, okay. Well, I guess we'll go ahead and get the chief police out here before this is done.
I don't believe that'll happen.
Uh, well, one of the officers will come out here.
You sure?
Yeah, 'cause it happened on camera.
Okay.
Right? Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know if y'all are ready to start.
Uh, I think the mayor is speaking to a police officer.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea. Probably a good idea. Good old boy system don't work around here no more. There again, there's Douglas Kidd. Definitely within 200 yards of Mr. Ramy over here. Has a violation of a judge's order. This guy... This guy did quick. This guy did quick. Somebody else is gonna have a charge on him, misdemeanor charge, but you know, misdemeanor disorderly conduct's not that big of a deal. You know what kind of guy says, "You threatened me." Turn it sideways, you get a better shot, sir. Turn it sideways, you get a better shot. I was trying to help you out. Should've did that in the first place. I never... Yeah, I'm a professional what? I'm a constitutional activist. Personally? My name's Shane. You're welcome. Yeah, it's real easy to find out my name. Got lots of public officials uh... Fired. Got lots of police officers forced to resign and terminated and post certifications pulled. Warden uh, Warden Weaver's no longer the warden anymore. That'd be another reason too. Hey, sir? Um, so this man threatened to take me outside and kick my ass on camera. Um, are we gonna do something about that? I didn't run the camera back and show it to you. Um, that's disorderly conduct, fighting words.
Okay, I understand that, but um, let's just try to conduct ourselves in an orderly fashion.
I was trying to conduct myself. I wasn't even speaking to him, sir.
Let's start over. Let's try to forgive each other.
No, no, there's no forgiving. There's no forgiving in the law. I'm gonna hold you to it. What is his name, Davis?
Yes, let me use the restroom please.
Okay. Do the right thing, Davis.
They have the right to speak. Um, they have the right to ask questions. They have the first amendment right to be here. So, yeah, we have to respect their rights as well. Hopefully it'll be a respectful meeting.
If anybody watches my content, I give what I get. I just had two great interactions with the clerk of courts in Banks County. I suggest you go and see how a professional, um, you know, of the county, they're not the city, but professional uh, public officials conduct themselves. And then it looks like that guy that threatened me was the councilwoman's husband, or I assume, you know? I hate to make assumptions. And again, we got Douglas Kidd in violation of the good behavior bond. 'Cause obviously, we've been here for, I don't know, since about 5:30. He's not supposed to come within 200 yards of David Ramy. It's also the guy that, in the video, that's coming out, tried to charge me $600 for the city of Cannon's credit card statements. Because he requested them by paper, and then they were gonna charge me labor to copy every single piece for three months worth of credit cards, city credit card statements. When it... Their credit card company on their website prefers you to do it by PDF so that they don't use the paper. But Doug Kidd, I mean, he's a fantastic attorney. Hopefully we're about to come to order here. You're going with both? 'Cause I may have to roll this shit mine off. I just wanna know, we gonna do something about this today?
Um, once the meeting is over with?
You'll watch the video?
Um, yes, sir, with.
Okay. That's all I'm asking. Look how red-faced he is, boy. He is mad.
Sir, what I will do, because I'm an investigator here.
Sure.
So I'm not gonna... If there's charges to take out, I'm not gonna take out charges and investigate my own case, so I will get another officer up here.
I mean, it's gonna be another... Is it Jackson County? I don't care who you have out here. If it's one of your guys, if it's Jackson County, somebody's gonna take a report. Somebody's gonna watch this and see that he committed disorderly conduct, and he should be charged. Okay, thank you. That's all I ask, Davis. Thank you very much. Genius. We'll pause it till it starts.
September 30. And to our court, in three... Do I have a motion to call for a word?
Question.
Five seconds?
Three.
Okay. All right, let the record note that the court is present. Let's... Let's apply. I plead the ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the House of Representatives, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thou art like a small affair, your... Gracious God, goodness for wisdom and compassion as we meet for this council session. May our voices be heard and identified the humility for the good of the city of Pendgrass. Bless those who reside in our city, this council, and those who attend and listen to this session. Amen. Do we have a... Do I have a record or anything?
Yes. Uh, for the month of September, we've had eight patrons and checked out nine books.
As far as the uh, the minutes from last, for the work session, have we had a less council meeting? So everyone get a chance to look over it, all right, and approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Are you talking about September 9th?
Yeah, it's September, August 26th and September 9th.
Aye.
Five seconds?
Sorry.
The minutes of the meetings of August 26th and September 9th were approved, too, or... All right, let me put it down.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Uh, the track report, everybody get a chance to... So look at that.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to be seen for filing?
Motion.
Five seconds?
Second.
Go.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Track report accepted for to be seen for filing. As far as all the business, um, what we have coming on, the park equipment that we purchased in Swatchland, the train that we're gonna go there, probably here in about two weeks. So there's a good chance to play before the end of October, it'll be up, right? The track group that we got through by Swatch, that showed up last week. So, we've got that. As far as the other whole business, we have the upcoming Fall Festival and Car Show. The Fall Festival will be on October 11th, and everything is...
Yeah.
Are you doing with that so far?
It is, it is. I'd like to say that it's October 11th from 10 to 4. We'll have a flyer coming out on social media this week. Um, the address is 4353 Mont Road, that's the theater area. And we'll have a DJ for music, food vendors. We have 50-plus vendors. Um, good crafts, painting, candles, stuff, trees, clothing, woodcrafted items. Um, dogs and cats for adoption by the Southern Cat Company out of Bear County. And then kids selling, we have jump houses and inflatable obstacle course with face painting. The car show, oh, wait.
The car show, yeah, on the 18th, people one to four.
Right.
Um, while we have some more information, you know, wanted, that's being handled by the European Street Cars Association, so... So that's still going. We have a couple vendors, food, a couple food vendors coming in, and then we also have a beer vendor.
We have optional parking for both vents.
If we have to, we'll use, it'll go over the park street on the left up there. And we're thinking of, we're trying to get an extra golf cart or something like that that we can shove people around, you know, if they...
What's that, uh, ribbons and all that stuff over there behind the millhouse? Is that parking for the city, or what is that all?
Back here?
Yeah.
Um, no, that was the... Yeah, well, west of the millhouse, he wanted to put a parking lot in there. But it's not a zone to put parking lot.
Are there people parking over there?
Just one says, I think a couple of his employees have it, but that, nobody's been using it. And it's been... Yeah, he owns that. He bought it. But anyway, that was... He wanted to put a...
Park that one, that's horrible and stuff?
No, no.
Britten.
No, he can't survey any people, put their little... He's not allowed to put a parking lot there.
Something around, probably.
Yeah, well, he wasn't, you know, he's not allowed to, so, but he's gotta do some changes. And that's it for the, any more business. Uh, new business, we're running the upper resolution to adopt the military uh, to our property taxes. We're gonna keep it the same as it was last year, the 4.5 military. The proposed budget so far that we want to introduce next month is gonna be a $3 million budget. It's up to a couple hundred thousand dollars in the previous budget. Like that won't be spilt out, and hopefully, you know, the following year, not... That we'll maybe start talking about lowering the military, getting it back down, but trying to get the city in a good position, you know? But, and we're in a, we're in a good position from what the cast has been, but so that's what we're doing, so, anyway. The resolution here, uh... I guess I should repeat the whole thing now. Okay, here, this is the resolution. Whereas, pursuant to the OCGA 48532, Mayor City Council of Pendgrass have complied with all the requirements proposed in the 2025 tax debt, I guess, and my duty of duty. And whereas, at its regular meeting September 30th at 7:00 PM, any other public notice of the same, the mayor and the Pendgrass City Council met in disorder, met for the purpose of adopting the military military rate of 4.5. Whereas, the military shall apply to all personal yields property for which the value is determined a tax assessed and selected by the city, with the recorders to be used as determined by the mayor and council. According to Georgia law and city charter, the mayor and city council are authorized to execute all necessary documents to operate within said military. Now, therefore it be that the military rate of 4.5 is hereby adopted and let be for the tax year of 2025. Resolved this day, 30th day, September 2025. Do I have a vote to accept?
Aye.
Five seconds?
Second, do we need comments?
What's that?
We don't need to talk about this today. This is, we'll be working on discussing.
We could discuss, yeah.
Any further discussion? I just had a question. Have we advertised this in the paper?
Yes, um, we have to do it once, and we have one at once, and it's in the paper already, actually.
Okay.
But it's in compliance with, you know, the law.
Which is what?
And so we keep, keeping the military the way it was last year, and with the taxes, so, all right? So we have to, we should go accept. Five seconds?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a vote?
Aye.
All right.
All right. And the resolution to adopt the military rate is accepted. The next thing, as far as the new business, is we, we adopted the ordinance to go to GMA with the retirement plans and stuff like that. Well, they did a typo.
Okay.
So, this ordinance uh, is just to... Where they corrected the typo, so we already approved this ordinance about the retirement plan. So this, to clarify, we have to accept this ordinance. I guess I... If you did a, did a typo, then you...
I'm the typos.
It's on, it's the last page.
Oh, okay. I see now. About two letters.
Yeah, yeah. The GMA made a mistake, so we're just, you know...
So there's two changes that may be decided.
That's what we're seeing.
Six will be deleted there. And that will be... Should be six, so, yeah, six months. And here. So it looks like G, uh, there were two changes. On the first part, the six will be deleted, and the six will be inserted for six months, if you understand. And y'all already adopted this ordinance? This would just be...
Yes.
Just a correction to the ordinance.
When did they need this, bud?
That's actually seven days ago. I'm gonna need to know if that's the date on it, so it's maybe...
All right, in order to amend and restate the retirement plan for the employees of the city of Pendgrass ordered with the subject to terms and conditions set forth in the attached adoption agreement, any amendment to the adoption agreement in Georgia's employee system, basic plan document, and the GNEDS trust agreement. When accepted by authorized officers of the city in GNEDS, foregoing shall constitute contract for the city in GNEDS, all as authorized by OCGA 47-5-20, be ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Pendgrass, Georgia, and is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, section 1. The retirement plan for the employees of the city of Pendgrass, Georgia, is hereby amended, stated, set forth, and subject to the terms and conditions stated in the option agreement, any amendment to the adoption agreement in Georgia's employees' benefit system, basic plan document, and the GNEDS trust agreement, as attached to this. The changes that were... Deletion of the number six on one part, and then the insertion of the number six in the second part. Highlight of the document. Continually with the ordinance, you have the first reading and a second to adopt, but you've already adopted the ordinance really acting voice of resolution to clarify that those two numbers are gonna be in here, so I would act as an argument that you just say.
Do I have a motion to accept this change in the ordinance?
Motion.
Five seconds?
Five.
Do I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Some, I try. The motion, uh... Um, the last thing on the new business is... um, the next thing on the new business is that there will be a calendar for public for the budget hearings. And first public hearing will probably be on February eighth, so that, that should be posted in the paper. So, as far as that, then we'll be opening them discussions for the budget at that time. So, the next, uh, we have a workshop that the city council will do, have a public, a couple of public hearings on it. And then, so we can get the budget adopted and going to effect on January first of the following year. That's it for the new business at this time. We can take some public comment. It will be, I need your name, address, and a two-minute time. Is there any public comment at this time?
If somebody will go, I will. My name is Shane Quiros. I hired from nobody. Uh, my address, constitutionally, I'm not obligated to provide, and I will not provide. I'm sorry? Thank you. Thank you for your understanding. Um, and to get this done really quickly in two minutes, I don't prepare my speeches. But I read the minutes from the meeting where you hired Doug Kidd. Mr. Mayor, you knew the situation Doug Kidd was in, and that's an ongoing situation. He is right now in violation of a good behavior bond by being within two hundred yards of this man, cuz this man was here before him. You had the video. You watched, and I believe Mr. Gomez, and I'm not sure who the other one was that voted no, because they had common sense. But you messed up. Because not only is he about to get Cannon sued, he's, he, he's gonna possibly fall y'all into a lawsuit if you allow him to give you bad advice. This man tried to charge me six hundred dollars for credit card statements. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let me make my last statement. Billy Mack is innocent. Billy Mack should get his job back. The other people that were holding keys, and when that evidence was, was moved from the basement of, there to here, I wanna know who did it. I'm filing open records requests on everybody in this city that gets a paycheck. I'll see your emails, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Want to be else?
I just wanna say one thing about everybody here has the right to be here, has the right to ask questions, has the right to film. Thank you for being respectful.
I lived in the city for nine years. I don't live in the city anymore, but I've seen this city grow. You, I, I, look, I'll stop, I'll stop. There you go. I'll go. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. No more, go ahead.
Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
This council meeting is adjourned.
There you go, folks. Now let's go over here and see if we are going to do what's supposed to be happening. So we're not allowed to just leave, right? But if he's trying to leave right now, he's not allowed to leave because.
No, well, I, um, because, like I said, I'm an investigator.
Okay.
Um, Deputy Adams is coming, Evans, I'm sorry.
Evans.
Coming over here, um, to get a statement from you, and you. So, um, I have to protect the mayor right now.
Go ahead, do your thing. Evans.
Officer Evans.
How you doing, Officer Evans? Good to meet you. Um, I'm back up a little bit from you. So, we were sitting here prior to the meeting starting. I, I don't know who that guy is. I, I just recently found out that he's, I guess, the husband of one of the coun- the councilwoman up there. Um, you know, I don't remember what, I wasn't even addressing him. I, I, I was talking to Doug Kidd. And, uh, he told me, do I want him to take me outside? Well, I did dress him when he started talking to me. Started, you know, saying I should keep my mouth shut. Do I live in the city and stuff like that? I said, does it matter? I'm not talking to you. He then says, uh, uh, cuz I said, oh, you must be just like the mayor's wife. You just open your mouth and insert yourself at any time, and it's okay. And he said, how about I take you outside and kick your ass on camera? Disorderly conduct, fighting words.
You have the video?
Yes, I'll show you. I'll stop this and I'll show you the video. All right? I'll give you my I D. I know you need all that. You know, typically we don't, but everybody knows who I am. All you gotta do is watch my channel, bro.
Absolutely.
Um, so here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna stop this. Are you still rolling? Keep it going. And, uh, so you released him? You, you said he was free to go?
No, I know what you're doing.
No, you, you have to tell me. This is an investigation.
I'm not gonna overtalk you. I know what you're doing.
Was he, was he not supposed to be charged? Was he not supposed to be charged?
You're not gonna listen to him, walk off.
You, no, you, you, and not do your job, that's fine. I'll fill out a warrant application myself and, and they'll charge him. Yeah.
Listen to me.
You, you told me you were gonna do the right thing earlier, Davis, and you didn't.
Everybody that's involved, I got their all that information. Officer Evans has your information?
Oh, he, he, he's not, I'm not filling out this report no more. I'm not worried about this.
You're not writing the statement?
No, no, I, I, well, see, what I'm gonna do is take it into my own hands.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I got, I got the case number myself. I'm gonna take it into my own hands. I'm gonna go take out a warrant. I, I'm gonna go take a warrant application out on him myself, and I'm gonna do your job, Davis. I'm gonna do your job. And guess what, Davis? I'm gonna pu- pulling your file too. Everybody, everywhere you been. Everywhere you been. Everywhere, good old boy system, let him go cuz the wife's, let him go. Let him go because the wife was, was the councilwoman. Go do your job. Evans, I apologize. This ain't on you.
Sir.
I'll handle it myself. I know how to do a warrant application myself. I got it. Um, do you have his name?
I'm gonna still do this report for you if you want.
Well, I mean.
It's up to you. I'm gonna do it on my part.
You do whatever. You called it in.
Okay.
I don't even have his name.
Okay, yeah, he's got his information.
What, what is his name?
It's gonna be in the report.
What is his name?
It's gonna, that's why, and when you get the case number, all his information's gonna be in there.
You can't tell me his name now? So I can go fill out my warrant application?
No, I, can you come and get the warrant? I mean, not the warrant, can you come get the, uh, report tomorrow?
Can I come get the report tomorrow?
Yes.
Can I drive out here and tell him I'm at my work tomorrow?
Well, I'd appreciate if you come back and get the report tomorrow.
Well, I'd appreciate it if y'all rewrote him tickets tonight for disorderly conduct and misdemeanor terrorist threats, Davis. You let him, had I threatened him, y'all would have put me in handcuffs and took me to jail, Davis.
He is also saying the same thing about you, so will you?
Yeah, you, you watched the video, did you not?
Yeah, I want, you're sending the video to me.
Okay.
Right, once I look at the video.
Okay, I did not say anything. I did not threaten him. Why could y'all not watch it here?
Can I at least look into it first?
No, you could, you could've looked into it today. Evans stood, stood here and watched the video.
Even though I work for the city.
Yeah.
My job is security for the mayor.
Security for the mayor, need security?
And you. Just to make sure everybody go, go home.
Yeah, but see, I was told, and I, I don't blame you, I don't blame you, Evans, but I was told he was getting charged right now. Cuz I said, I don't wanna, don't put him in bracelets. I was told he was getting charged right now because this officer witnessed two misdemeanors on camera.
Hold on. Four minutes. The same thing you're saying about him is the same thing not only he said, but other people involved, so.
The camera doesn't lie, Davis.
Give me a chance to prove your innocence until I can't.
Oh, don't wait. You'll see it. It's gonna go viral, and you're gonna look bad. You wanna see it now?
If I do, then god be with me.
You wanna see it now? I can show it to you now. Then are you gonna drive down to his house and arrest him? No, see, I know how to take a warrant a- a- application now. I know how to come and get the report. I know how to pull open records requests. I know how to do it all, Davis. Thank you for not doing the job. Evans, you're a good officer.
Have a great night, sir.
You too.
I, I heard he's, he's getting the hell out, the guys up there, he's getting the hell out of here because he was gonna get arrested.
Yeah. He knew he's getting charged. He knew he was getting charged, and Davis right there let him go. Davis let him go. Evans sat, sat here and listened to it three times, and then he, he, the, the Davis, that guy's saying, oh, everybody else is on his side saying you did this. The camera don't say that, genius. Oh, guys, I'm sorry. I'm done.